Can you still hear me? You good?
All right, we're gonna get started this morning. Thank you for joining us for the City of Oklahoma City's teleconference city council meeting. As always, we have a few announcements to make regarding this teleconference meeting. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued to today, March 16th, at 1:00 PM via teleconference unless we have the opportunity to stay at a different time. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, public hearing, or to speak under Citizens to Be Heard, please call 405-297-2391, or text 405-219-7927, or email cityclerk@OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. After three minutes, the speaker's microphone will be muted. A 30-second reminder will be provided by the clerk prior to the microphone being muted. I ask that all participants, except the council members, keep their phones on mute until they are recognized to speak. Please press star six to speak. And with that, we have an invocation. Reverend Janice Walter of Fairview Baptist Church is joining us this morning. Reverend Walter, are you there?
I'm here, Mayor. I'm here.
Awesome. Well, I had the pleasure of worshiping with you and your church just a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know if you're gonna bring it quite that same way this morning. I don't know. It might be too early for us, but but that was a great, a great service, and we're honored to have you here with us at our virtual meeting this morning. So Reverend Walter of Fairview Baptist Church, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Grace and peace to all of you from God, our Father, and our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. It is indeed an honor and a privilege for me having this opportunity to bring this invocation to open this city council meeting. Thank you, Mayor Hope, for thinking of me in this manner. I am I am indeed grateful to God for this opportunity. Let us pray. Colossians 3 and 17 says, "And whatever you do in word or deed, do all in the name of the Lord Jesus, giving thanks to God the Father through him." Gracious Father, we pause right now to praise your name because you are worthy to be praised. We thank you, Father, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, Father, that during these dark and dismal days, you've been our provider, our protection, and our hope. Father, we pray now for these men and women who have gathered this morning by way of Zoom. You've gifted them with leadership, ability, and you've opened doors for them to operate in their gifts. So Father, we pray that you use each one of them for such a time as this, to be that voice crying out for those whose cries go unheard. Strengthen them now, mind, body, and spirit, for whatever lies ahead. Father, we pray that you unify them for the betterment of those of whom they serve. Even if there are disagreements, Father, we pray that you bind disagreeable spirits in the mighty name of Jesus, so that all those citizens of Oklahoma City will be cared for according to your will. So Father, we pray that you continue to protect them from the fiery darts of the enemy. We pray that you continue to provide for them the necessary tools needed to carry out the planned task on behalf of the people. We pray that you continue to crown their heads with knowledge and wisdom to follow as you lead. We pray that you would continue to give them the courage to stand for what is right against all odds. We pray that you continue to open their eyes to see, tune their ears to listen, prepare their hearts to empathize, use their hands to give, ready their feet to stand strong for unity, and connect their spirit with your spirit, so that in everything they do, they do it all to your glory. In the mighty and the matchless name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Walter. All right. Well, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we'll start with item three, which is Office of the Mayor. And does not appear, we have any ceremonial readings today, but we do have appointments to the Building Code Board of Appeals, Downtown Design Review, Game and Fish Commission, Post-Employment Benefits Trust, Redevelopment Authority, Urban Renewal Authority, and the Stockhead City Urban Design Committee. So we have appointments at items A through G. We could take them with one motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
I have some problems. I've This is Mark.
Oh, okay. All right. Councilman Stonecifer votes aye, and I believe maybe Councilman McAtee would need to vote verbally as well.
I vote aye.
Okay, so he votes aye as well. Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, Councilman Stonecifer. Councilman McAtee?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nice, I'm told, we haven't recorded your vote yet. There we go. Passed unanimously. Item five, Request for Uncontested Continuance. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have several items on today, starting on page 11. This is item 9A, PUD 1801, and the request is further items to April 13th. On page 12. On page 12, under 9J1, dilapidated structures. And all of these items on dilapidated, unsecured, and abandoned will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 6600 Braniff Drive, to renotify for additional structures. And item B, 1524 Myers Place, the owner has removed. On page 13, under 9K1, unsecured structures. Item E, 4200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner is secured. Item G, 1511 Northwest 11th Street, the owner is secured. Item H, 1519 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item I, 1840 Northwest 14th Street, the owner has secured. Item K, 200 Northeast 16th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 12720, the owner is secure, I'm sorry, Northeast 37th Street, the owner has secured. Item S, 12621 Northeast 38th Street, the owner has secured. Item U, 3229 Southwest 40th Street, to renotify for a new owner. Item V, 1116 Northwest 42nd Street, the owner has secured. Item W, 1405 Northeast 42nd Street, the owner has secured. Item Z, 2845 Southwest 44th Street, to renotify for additional violations. On page 14, abandoned buildings, item 9L1. Item A, 6600 Braniff Drive, to renotify for additional structures. Item C, 4200 North Pennsylvania Avenue, the owner has secured. Item E, 1511 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item F, 1519 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item G, 1840 Northwest 14th Street, the owner has secured. Item L, 12720 Northeast 37th Street, the owner has secured. Item M, 12621 Northeast 38th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 3229 Southwest 40th Street, to renotify for a new owner. Item P, 1116 Northwest 42nd Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 1405 Northeast 42nd Street, the owner has secured. Item U, 2845 Southwest 44th Street, to renotify for additional violations. And that's all the items I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And now we have item six, revocable permits, and this is kind of exciting. It signals the return of spring, but it also perhaps signals some return to normalcy as we emerge from the pandemic. This is our first revocable permit in a long time. So 6A is a revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and Nate the Great Eight, Inc., to hold the Nate the Great Eight Race on March 27th, 2021, at Lake Overholser. And it looks like we do have someone who has signed up to speak is April Scott on the line. Do you see April?
I'm here now.
Yeah, there you are. Go ahead. Tell us a bit about your event.
Um, well, we're super excited. We were supposed to have it last year, and then, of course, everything happened. And we're expecting about 250 in-person runners, and we have a COVID safety plan in place. And our very favorite, Mark Bravo, is going to be calling the race, and OK Runner will be there, so we're hoping it's a good, safe, fun return to normalcy.
Sorry, I was muted. I was talking to myself.
Like, okay, should I keep going?
Uh, thank you. We're excited. That sounds great. And Councilman Greiner, I don't believe is with us, so if anybody else wants to jump in and make a motion, that'd be great. All right, got a motion in a second. Cast your votes, Councilman Stonecifer.
I'm working now. I just voted. Thank you.
Okay, great. Councilman McAtee? All right, awesome. Passed unanimously. All right. Thank you, April, for joining us, and good luck with the event. All right, we will now recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Where we have items A through I, we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Oh, Councilman McAtee? Is he voting? Okay. Councilman McAtee, are you able to vote electronically? Okay, all right. Passed unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCMFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A through D we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCEAT and reconvene as the council, where we now find ourselves on page three of your printed agenda, item seven, the Consent Docket. We have scheduled presentations for items O, item Q, actually, it'll be kind of Q through T. Item B and W. Item BH. I believe that's it. So is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for either a separate vote or just a separate little bit of discussion?
Yes, I have a few items I've like just to hear about more. Item U, item BG, and BI.
Did you say AG?
EG, E as in boy.
Oh, EG. All right. EG, and what was the last one?
BI.
BI, okay. Good? Anyone else?
Yes, item BL.
Okay.
And I think that's it for me.
Okay? Anyone else?
Yes. I already spoke with staff about this, but just to make it even more the items AJ, U, A, oh, they're all in the same area, but I just would like to hear kind of an update about the specific
Okay.
And then, um, I'd also like to hear just a little bit of an update regarding the items with I think it's Q through T related to homelessness.
Okay, yeah, we have a presentation on that.
I missed that one. Okay, thanks. Um, I believe those are my Those are them. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, hearing none, we'll take them in order. So we'll start with item O, where we have a scheduled
Yes, yes, sir. Randy Marks is here with the Planning Department to just give us an update on this project.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to talk about this beautiful project. I'm Randy Marks, Public Art Project Manager, and I'm going to share my screen now. Over a year ago, when we had our first discussions with Parks staff about the 1% for art project for the new recreation center, Assistant Parks Director Melinda McMillan Miller requested that the art be created with the involvement of students from nearby Douglas High School. Arts liaison Robbie Kinzel and I took the request to Arts Commission for discussion. They approved of the approach with requirement that the project be led by a professional artist or artist team. Armed with that, we talked with Rhonda Taylor, the Director of Visual and Performing Arts for the Oklahoma City Public Schools, who introduced us to Douglas art teacher Yuna Anderson and Principal Thomas McNeely. Both of them were enthusiastic about student involvement, and we soon found out that Councilwoman Nice was also highly supportive of the approach, and she has taken an active interest in its development. On the map, you can see that the construction site at the corner of Northeast 10th Street and Frederick Douglass Avenue is just blocks away from Douglas High School. Arts and Culture Staff and the Architecture Team analyzed numerous sites in and around the center and the types of art that would work in each. We settled on the idea of a ceramic and mixed media mural to be installed on the west wall of the nadiatorium as the best project to give students the most hands-on experience in its creation. The call to artists was announced in August and attracted interest from artists and artist teams from around the country. The selection committee chose three of those artist teams as finalists, each of whom then participated in a site visit to understand more in-depth about the project and its context. And later, those teams made presentations of their conceptual designs. I want to note here that the selection committee included two Douglas High seniors, Anita Hendricks and Brianna Brown, who greatly impressed everyone on the committee and that worked with them with their thoughtfulness and engagement. The committee and staff were very happy to see that all three design concepts were high-quality, really well-thought-out approaches that would give students a lot of experience, and that would lead to art that would last for generations. The committee chose the team composed of Ebony, Iman Dallas, Quia Calhoun, and Jerika Walsh, all local artists who banded together for this competition. They have proposed a work called Freedom to Dream. Here you see the image superimposed on an architectural rendering of the wall. The mural, which covers the entire wall and includes painted wall surface in addition to glazed and fired ceramic elements, reflects the spirit of Ms. Willa D. Johnson and her legacy as a community builder. We see her at the center of the design encouraging a group of children to step out, follow their dreams, and fly. The selection was not made solely on the strength of the of the design. The team proposes a thorough education and participation element in conjunction with Ms. Anderson's overall teaching plan, and with the addition of a summer intensive for student interns who will be paid to work in the team's studio over an eight-week period, creating many of the ceramic tiles. Finally, when this project was first conceived, we hoped that somehow, and we didn't know how, but somehow we hoped that it would spark the beginning of a ceramic program at Douglas High where none had existed for several years. And as it turns out, it's going to do just that. Ms. Taylor and Oklahoma City Public Schools have purchased new kilns and equipment for the school, so a lasting legacy of this project is already beginning. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
I don't necessarily have a question, but I do want to say, Mr. Randy, thank you so much for this presentation, and I hope that you all see the beauty that we are so excited about for this particular area of our community and this wall. And I'm not sure if I had expressed this to anyone, but I asked for a copy of this, and I went and hand-delivered it to Ms. Johnson so she could see it for herself. And when I tell you her face lit up when she saw it, that in itself means the world, and also during this process of us choosing this group to to be a part of this project, all of whom are from Oklahoma City, which we are excited about. The young people that were on this committee, one of them burst into tears when she saw this as we were looking at at the final projects, because, again, this brings a new hope and a new breadth of of life into our community, and especially in the nadiatorium where this gorgeous display is going to be housed. So kudos to the ladies of Pasail Plunge. And a side note, Ms. Calhoun was one of the art teachers when I was a student at Northeast, so she has some long history with education and art for our students and just the the work of the of the ladies that are a part of this speaks volumes. So again, just the thoughtful process of them paying young people to be a part of this project, again, speaks of how we are pouring community in into something such as this. So I hope you see the reflection of of Ms. Johnson and the freedom to dream just as as we do, and we're looking forward to this. And thank you to Ms. Robbie as well, because this was a very complicated process to do this all virtually and to do a virtual site tour. Never done that before, but it can be done, just so you know.
I would just echo everything Councilwoman Nice said and add Arty, congratulations to Ebony, a resident, and someone with work I'm very familiar, and I'm just excited to see collaboration take place here, especially with these students.
All right. Well, if that concludes comments on that item, we can move on to item Q, and really, it's presentation of items Q through T.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Jared Shaded with us this morning. Jared is our homelessness programs coordinator in the planning department, and he's going to talk about these these four greens.
Morning, everybody. I'm Jared Shaded, the homeless programs planner, the planning department. All of these items address contracting for our second round of ESG COVID relief funds. The ESG stands for Emergency Solutions Grant. It's typically a grant we receive annually even when we're not under a pandemic, but that allocation is typically around $400,000. After the pandemic began, they allocated an emergency allocation early last year of about 1.5, close to 1.5 million. These services that Emergency Solutions Grant provides can be, there's a range of them, but predominantly what we're using them for is for eviction prevention, rapid rehousing for people who've recently become evicted or ended up on the street for other reasons. It can also provide services for shelter and outreach. The bulk of that first round that we allocated last year did go towards eviction prevention. That was before the The bulk of that first round that we allocated last year did go towards eviction prevention. That was before the start of the Community Carers Partnership. And I want to clarify, these funds are separate than those funds. These funds came from HUD. Those funds come from the Treasury and they have different requirements of them. As a result of the eviction moratorium, we actually were not allowed to use a lot of our prevention funds, so we still have a lot of them. And so we shifted our case managers over at that time to assist the Community Carers Partnership with case management services while they provided services for rent and utility assistance. This second second round was much larger than that first round. We received close to $6 million late last year for the same services. This time, our intention was to allocate those out for those rapid rehousing services for people who were not able to avoid an eviction either because they didn't contact us, they didn't seek assistance in time, or they got evicted for reasons other than non-payment of rent. In addition to that, though, we allocated some funds for what we call a rapid rehousing surge. You'll see, one of those programs was to City Rescue Mission, about $740,000, and that's what that program is for. And what that will do is coordinate with all of our shelter providers to try to provide rapid rehousing to get people out of those congregate living environments as much as possible and get them depopulated to to as much as as much as we can to try to make them just essentially safer and get more people housed. And once that's contracted, they can start doing that, and they've already been trying to coordinate with the other shelter programs to to start making that happen. Additionally, we've allocated some out to another, some other shelter providers that can also provide that directly on their own. You'll see Pivot and some others. But our goal here is to, yeah, now focus more on the rapid rehousing, save our prevention dollars for when we need them, say after the cares dollars either expire or have been used. In the meantime, we intend to keep directing our prevention clients over to cares unless they get overwhelmed, in which case we'll take, we'll take them. We also did initially set aside a portion of this to fund services over at the winter shelter site to make sure that we were able to get that off the ground over at the Willard School. And I can take any questions if you have any.
Yeah, Jared, I have a question about kind of the street outreach efforts and kind of what that's looked like over the last year. I know talking with some of my colleagues, I've heard some numbers about successes they've had with getting folks moved straight into housing off the streets. I don't know if you have those numbers for like all of the street outreach teams that we have, and I think particularly with that are part of the COC, if you have those numbers, or or is that something that you just don't have off the top of your head?
No, I don't have off the top of my head, but I can give you kind of some feedback on how they've operated this year. I mean, obviously, when this first started, our outreach resources shrunk significantly. It was down to about four teams. Predominantly, it was, you know, that our police outreach team, the Homeless Alliance, Mental Health Association, then our VA Services Teams, like SSVF and the VA. Only two of those really primarily address any population. That's Mental Health Association and the Homeless Alliance. But it was a, we hadn't at that point been doing the type of outreach we typically do, which is a little bit more strategic at this, at that point, it was more survival outreach because all the food sites had shut down. We were just trying to keep people from moving around so much. Since then, they've kind of, we've kind of been able to sort of get back to normal, but we still don't really have that many resources out there. It is still essentially the same teams. They have had a lot of successes, but say, over the course of the storm, I don't know how many people that we actually were able to get from those hotels that we put them in into housing, but we actually were able to get a lot of people over the course of that period that we had not met before, served, and we got them into, once, a lot of families, actually, which we don't see a lot of typically, but a lot of them during the storm, we moved into hotel rooms during that period. And I think at the peak of the storm, between the shelter, some other facilities and the hotel rooms, we had, I think, close to 450 people housed that night. And those people are now in our system and can actually get assisted where we had not, we had not been in contact with them before. So I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I can get them for you, but we have had some success effectively through the outreach.
Yeah, I think I'd love to have a presentation about that at some point, because I know even just talking with the outreach team at the association, just in one of our staff meetings recently, since January of 20, they've been able to house, they reported about 80 to 85 people that they've been able to house straight off the streets from just just their effort. So they're, I think, maybe they now have three or four staff, but for most of this last year, they've had just, I think, two. And so I think just especially in talking about outreach and kind of particularly that outreach from social service organizations that can go out and build that trust and have some of that that back and forth with folks and then, you know, looped into the continuum of care and kind of that ability to be, you know, collaborate on some of those really hard cases, like you said, for those folks that aren't necessarily always plugged into the system. I just, I would be really curious to hear if we can hear some of those efforts from like across all the outreach teams and see kind of what what, you know, what numbers are looking like as far as getting folks moved in and and kind of where where the needs still are, like what what those case managers are running into for those folks. Is it that they have a, you know, criminal legal background that is is kind of getting in the way of housing or employment? Is it they just, they've been applying for social security forever, but they keep getting denied? Like, you know, just is it they don't have the resources and that they need some more resources to get folks moved in to some somewhere and do that housing-first approach? Or kind of what are the other kind of barriers still there? So I just curious to, especially as we kind of move back a little bit, maybe, and that was the other question I had to the congregate services and kind of what, is there kind of a transition plan back into as folks get vaccinated and things, you know, the day shelter being open for more capacity and those sorts of things?
Yeah, we're actually, our Shelter Directors Meeting is this Thursday, and we've already had a discussion about how we're going to approach that with them coming up this Thursday and how we want to do that. We did, starting this past week, you know, our database that we keep, anybody enters into, we developed an ROI, or a release of information for anybody, any of our clients who get the COVID vaccine, because all of our shelter providers, most of them are on the HMIS. And so we were able to then put into HMIS whether someone has gotten vaccinated, and that will help them actually track people coming into their facility to know whether they've been vaccinated or not, which will be provide them with some relief about the people who are coming in and the level of safety. I think we are getting to the point where we think we can start letting more people probably back in, but I don't want to speak for them just yet to the degree of that. I'm hoping this surge program will help that out as well as we are able to move some people who've been there previously and maybe have been vaccinated, maybe not, and at least get them into a unit that ended them out into a permanent unit, and that will actually create some more space in the shelters as well. So I do anticipate us probably moving more towards not normalcy, but more, you know, back into the shelters. Hopefully, it's over the course of the next few months, but again, I don't operate them. I don't want to speak to them until I talk to them this Thursday.
No, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Hey, Jared, this is Mark Stonecifer here. How are you today?
Good. How are you, Mark? Councilman Stonecifer, sorry.
Mark's better. I prefer Mark. Can you kind of give us an update on the Willard Winter Shelter? I know there were some people that came to council and had some concerns in the neighborhood and just how successful that program is and how it is coexisting with neighbors in that neighborhood.
Well, I mean, I've been passing through that neighborhood several times just to ensure that it does stay clean. Their side in particular has stayed clean. The neighborhood definitely still has its issues, but it looks and appeared to be cleaner to me than it had been in a while. The, I've not noticed a significant, you know, when it closes, there's people who move back and forth between the day shelter and the shelter. There's still that happening, but other than that, we have not, I've not received a lot of significant complaints from the neighborhood. You know, we've gotten a couple of calls about things, and then I called Greg and they've addressed them. But there's been only kind of one or, I think, one, really, actually, I think, one person who's had any complaints, and they weren't necessarily really complaining about the shelter. They were complaining about just the problem in general, and I think it was one of the people who did come to the meeting. Overall, it seems to have been pretty successful.
I guess.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm, I'm hopeful that it's been been successful. If we could find out at some point what our numbers are looking like and how we're doing over there, that would be helpful.
Yeah, they, we track our numbers every night. I know they've come down since the blizzard, since the weather's warmed up. That typically happens. I think it was about 270 at the peak of the blizzard, and it's come down gradually since then. I believe the other night they had about 160. Our peak over there is probably, I mean, safest is 250, and I don't think we've hit that in quite a while. But we track it in the HMIS every night, so we can actually get a rolling record for you if you like.
It's good to hear it's been successful. Thank you.
No problem.
So I'll just add to that, to the point about the cleanliness and those sorts of things and just sort of the symptoms that we see from having people that live unsheltered in the community. There is a business that I consistently hear from, and I know Dan and I get a similar, you know, usually copied on on an email about the specifically along Virginia and some of the, you know, shopping carts with litter and things left behind by folks that I want to say it was like a week and a half or two after Willard opened, we got an email from that person, from that business, and said, I don't know what y'all are doing lately, but it's looking great. And they said, you know, I know we complain a lot, but but I wanted, so I wanted to reach out and say, you're doing something great right now, and we'd love to see what's going on. So I thought that was an interesting timing that when you have folks having an opportunity to be inside, that some of those those symptoms decrease at least, if not completely go away.
Again, though, a part of the reason we're going to be addressing the shelter situation also is because I want to remind everybody the Willard does close at the end of this month. And so that we have to consider that, consider that. You're still going to have people coming back outside if we don't have enough beds out there. And, you know, there's obviously going to be people in that neighborhood. There were previously, but the coronavirus pandemic has made it significantly worse with the drop in shelter beds. I think that's pretty obvious. We've seen a lot more on the street than than usual. But hopefully, we can get those other beds back open at the other facilities soon safely and and start to alleviate that problem.
Thank you. Okay. Are there comments and questions on those items? If so, we'll move on to item U. Councilwoman Hammond, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, I was just curious to learn a little bit more about this. I know I had seen the call for kind of scholar knowledge, knowledge keepers on why, I think through the OKC Arts Social Media, and was just kind of curious to get an update on kind of where it is in the process now that we're authorizing some funds for it.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. This is Robbie Kinsel, I'm the Arts Liaison for the city. If approved, this resolution will allow us to make application for a $5,000 grant from the Oklahoma Humanities. These are federal funds that are re-granted, and they're intended to bring new perspectives to communities. So if awarded, we will, we will incorporate some native voices by hiring an indigenous scholar or a knowledge keeper. We have flexibility here if our negotiations don't come through with the scholar that the committee is currently working with, because we do have another scholar on the committee. So what the indigenous scholar or knowledge keeper will help us do is interpret content and messaging about the history leading up to and including the land run. And this messaging will be used for future exhibition markers for the Land Run Monument, updates to the city's website, and other educational purposes. This is the short-term goal of the committee, and the committee does include Brenda Golden, who is the scholar I mentioned to you. She's a Juris Doctorate. Kendra Clements, Sarah Adams Cornell, Jane Abraham, former Arts Commission Chair, Brian Chambers, and then we have a Tulsa University intern, Piper Prologo. And so if awarded, the work will be able to be presented in July. The long-term goal would be to apply for additional funding from other sources and present some future artwork at or near the site.
I was like starting to have some questions, and every time you said something new, you answered my questions. So thank you so much.
I'm glad.
Okay. Well, that brings us then, we're just going right down the agenda here. Now we're at V and W, and we have a scheduled presentation on that.
Yes, sir. Item V is actually on the Better Streets Safer City. It's a, it's the plan. It's an amendment to the plan. So Eric Winger is going to give his presentation on that. And then on W, that is an annual report for Better Streets Safer City, and Eric Winger and then Jeff Butler, our planning director, will give an update on that. So I'll go ahead and let Eric start us off on item B.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor and Council. I'm Eric Winger, Public Works Director. Item 7V is a resolution adopting the March 2021 Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Implementation Plan Update. So this is an item that you've seen before. We've had several updates during the course of the program. There are three, there are three street projects that are exceeding their budgets, and so that's what's included in this amendment today. The total value of the amendment is $1,120,000. $450,000 is for Walker Avenue, Curta 10th Street. While the staff and the contractor were in the field looking at this project, there is a small portion of Northwest 9th Street that is also in need of resurfacing that's adjacent to the Walker portion of the project. And so this would add that short section of Northwest 9th, west of Walker, to that. $350,000 is Portland Avenue, Northwest 50th to Northwest 63rd. Again, as staff and the contractor in the field, it was found to be in the best interest of the city to extend the project further to the north where Portland dead ends at Lake Shore Drive. And then the last one is $320,000. It's part of a neighborhood resurfacing. It's an area bound by Santa Fe, High, Southeast 29th, and Southeast 15th. What we simply find is that on a lot of our neighborhood resurfacing projects, sometimes the condition of the street is worse than expected, and so it's requiring additional repair before we can actually proceed with the work. The item was recommended by the Better Streets Advisory Board on March 1st, and so it's for your consideration today. I can answer any questions on item V.
Can you, okay, I heard 9th West of Walker. Is that correct?
Yes, so the the amendment, Walker from Curta 10th is already an approved project that's in the plan. The amendment will add 9th Street just immediately west of Walker towards St. Anthony Hospital, which is a damaged section of 9th that needs to also be replaced. So since the contractor will be right there in the area, we feel it's in the best interest to go ahead and replace that section.
And do you have a sense of when that will, that project will be happening?
All of this is expected to be, I mean, either this is work underway or work that's happening this spring.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's very good news. I have, I've heard many complain about that stretch of 9th from St. Anthony's and other folks in the area, so very exciting.
There any additional questions on item B?
Yeah. Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, we're ready for item W. I'm going to go ahead and share a screen. So both Jeff Butler, Planning Director, and I are planning to co-present the Better Streets Safer City 2020 Annual Report to you. Hope everybody can see this on their screen. We're pleased to present this. This is the third annual report of the Better Streets Safer City program I'm coming to you today. It's been a collaborative effort with Public Works Planning and the Parks Department. You know, there's been a lot of progress in 2020, and there's just been tremendous amount of work that's been completed. And the report we do have in paper copy, and it's also going to be posted online at Better Streets Safer City. It's the OKC.gov forward slash better safer. So you can find that report there, and I'm happy to provide copies to any of the council that would like a hard copy as well. And the report's actually 22 pages, and we're not going to present all 22 pages, but both Jeff and I will present some of the highlight pages. And this is the financial overview. This is a reminder that the project or the program includes five different categories: streets, street enhancements, sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails. I mean, it's a summary of the updated allocations of the $240 million program, and then we did already allocate some of the excess collections. The majority of the collection is 168 million going towards streets, 30 million towards streetscapes, 25 million towards sidewalks, 20 million towards new trail, and 14 million towards bike. And this is the financial overview showing those collections and total revenues to date of 261 million. We've also shown a status of year by year. So the first blue box is the 2018, the first green box is the 2019, and then the second blue box is the 2020. You will see that the collections are tapering off by year. We did end collections under the Better Streets Safer City Sales Tax Program last year. Those are now going towards maps four. Again, as we continue to make progress and we're making allocations regularly, work is being completed. Majority of the street work will be finishing up this year, and we're very much in the design of the streetscapes and the bike lanes, which are two of our most challenging project categories. and the bike lanes, which are two of our most challenging project categories. When we look at the street resurfacing portion of the program, 60% of the dollars were allocated towards arterial and 40% were allocated towards residential streets throughout the city. The Advisory Board, as you know, has made numerous recommendations, and you'll find that there's been nearly 115 intersection improvements, 1,888 ramp improvements, over 193,000 linear feet of new curb and gutter, and over 361,000 tons of asphalt already placed as a part of the program. The majority of the street resurfacing funds have already been allocated. And as we look at a few of the project highlights, and these are, again, these are pages directly from the report, the arterial resurfacing has completed 86 projects with more than 200 lane miles. The residential has completed more than 20 residential projects and 162 miles. So tremendous progress, 101 million total allocated towards arterial resurfacing and 67 million towards residential. The report goes forward from here. It's going to highlight the other project categories, and I'm going to go ahead and transfer this to Jeff, and he'll update on the remaining four.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council, Jeff Butler, Planning Director. In talking about street enhancements, as Mr. Winger mentioned, the street enhancements and the bike facilities are fairly complicated, just because there's a lot of retrofitting of existing, the existing situation, and a lot of very detailed design work involved. So this slide shows you the progress for several streetscapes that we're working on right now. There are several that are in design in various stages. There are a couple that are in construction, 10th and Vermont, for example, and 39th Street. In fact, those are two examples. One's kind of on the one side of the spectrum in terms of simplicity. 10th and Vermont is the addition of a stoplight and crosswalk, and a few other improvements. It's fairly simple and straightforward project, whereas 39th Street is a full streetscape that includes amenities, bike facilities, sidewalks, and just a host of very complex design and a lot of detail involved there. Both of those are underway. 10th and Vermont is actually nearly complete, just a few punchless items that are left to do on that. And so a lot has happened on that over the past few months, actually, and even a lot since the beginning of the year. So that's kind of the street enhancements in a nutshell. As you can see, like I said, there are several projects that are in design and some getting close to construction. So we're excited to see that coming up. Sidewalks, we have, we have, we have three different main, well, four different main categories where we build sidewalks, and that comes from Bike Walk OKC, the city's bike and pedestrian master plan. And the first one is school connections, then we have park connections, and we have transit connections. We also have our pedestrian priority areas, which are more typically located in the core of the city, that cover a lot of ground and are in areas that we really want to encourage walkability and enhance walkability, because a lot of people do need to walk, and there are a lot of places that need to be served in those areas, walkable commercial districts and so forth. And you can see the numbers there on screen, the number of schools we've been able to impact and parks we've been able to grant better access to, as well as transit stops. Got a great, thank you, a shout out from one of our neighborhoods there, Eagle Ridge. Very appreciative of our sidewalk construction program. And just, we're happy to see that nearing completion. And we also were able to use a little bit of excess collections to bolster the sidewalk numbers as well. The next slide, can move on to that. We've got bicycle infrastructure. Again, bicycle infrastructure can be complicated. It depends really on the situation. We've got a lot of on-street, we've got a lot of changes that we're going to have to make, lane reductions, and we've got complicated on-street parking situations that can get to be a challenge. But fortunately, we've been able to make some progress on this. We've got a lot of projects under design, and that is, that's proceeding. I think this year, we're going to see some projects going in. If you've been on General Pershing in the last few months, you've noticed that that's complete. We've got some photos there. We've got a lot of, the funding has been allocated. 65% of our funding has been allocated. And the reason we haven't allocated more, we really need to see with bicycle infrastructure, because the complicated design, it's, we're never quite certain until something is fully designed, how much it's going to cost. So we've given ourselves a little bit of extra leeway there. But in the next, in the coming months, as we get things finalized, we'll be able to make final allocations and get the design work going and finalize on all of our projects. So you can see that we've got quite a bit of projects going on. We actually have, I wanted to point out, we've got a project that we received a substantial amount of ACOG funding for, some grant funds that'll help things go farther, Southeast 59th Street. And we're always looking for opportunities, of course, to expand our, to expand the projects and add to the amount of money that we're able to utilize through grants. And then finally, we have trails, and I'll, I'll just kind of point out and hand it over to Eric. On this slide, we've got quite a few trails that we have spent a lot of funds on resurfacing, just to make sure that those are in great condition for safe cycling, safe and comfortable cycling. We have two trails that are, that are new, the Deep Fork Trail and the Lake Hefner Connection, both of which are currently under design. The Lake Hefner Connection actually just connects the existing trail system at Lake Hefner, across Hefner Road to the north, and to make a connection with an existing trail on the other side of the street. So it's a fairly straightforward one that we expect to be happening under construction soon. Deep Fork Trail, as you know, is a much more complicated and expensive trail, but it's an important connection. Design work is proceeding quickly on that one, and we've managed to allocate some additional funds to that over the past year. And so we're excited about all of those trail projects. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Eric for the last couple of slides.
So this, the final pages that are included in the report, this is the 2020 year-end review. So just in 2020 alone, we did 21 miles of sidewalk. We resurfaced more than 119 miles of street, four new miles of bike lane, and 10 miles of trail. Again, I mentioned just the complete collaboration between the Planning Department, Public Works, and Parks as we, as we work into 21 to complete the work. Just our appreciation, I know from Jeff and I to all the staff that are working on this, to our Citizens Advisory Board and their commitment, I mean, completing this third year. This report is one that was done in-house, and so again, we want to extend an appreciation to Masan Cox, who's our graphic designer and our liaison that helped organize all the slides and put the report together for you this morning. And with that, website is on this last page, OKC.gov/bettersafer. You can get more project updates and information there. Jeff and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have this morning.
This is Mark Stone Seifer. How are you today?
I'm great. Thank you.
One question on the Better Streets Safer City Sales Tax Fund. What was the final revenue number that we collected?
The latest number, at least, that we had as of December 31st of last year was 261 million. You know, we continue to receive interest from some of those dollars, and so we do have a monthly financial. I can get you an improved number, but as of December 31st, it was 261 million.
Interesting. Everything will end up somewhere around 270 million. Would you guesstimate?
That seems a little high, but let me get you the last financial report, and I'd be happy to get that to you after the council meeting today.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this item? Thank you, gentlemen. That means we will move on to AJ, Councilman Cooper. I think you wanted to hear a little bit about this item, maybe all the way through AO. Is Councilman Cooper with us? I know, I heard he had some issues.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes, there you are.
Can you hear me well?
Yeah, actually, you sound fine.
My goodness. Well, that's wonderful. Sorry, we're having some internet issues over here. So yeah, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about this next step in this project, this very exciting project, and if we could kind of learn a little bit more about what these particular items will bring to this particular street enhancement project, which is also part of the Better Streets Safer City conversation we just heard.
Councilman Cooper, this is Eric Winger, Public Works Director. I'm happy to answer those questions. There are six items on the agenda this morning that relate to the work that's already underway on Northwest 39th. As Councilman mentioned, there is a streetscape underway there that's a part of our Better Streets Safer City program. And so the six items that are included on the agenda are actually the official changes to the parking configuration that are going to be in that district. And so there's a combination of 90-degree, 45-degree, 45-degree reverse angle parking, and also the creation of new reserved spaces or ADA accessible spaces on that, in that district. I mean, these are on the streets of Northwest 39th, Young's, excuse me, Northwest 39th, Northwest 40th, and work on the streetscape is well underway. It's about 25% complete as we update now. The total improvements are about $1.7 million in expected completion is this fall, 2021. So we've been working very closely with the district just to have opportunities to celebrate the new district this fall, potentially with a parade and other events in the area. So this will be the introduction of these items. You will see these for the next two council meetings as we go through the public hearing and then the final. But again, I can answer any questions that you have about the particular parking arrangements or the Northwest 39th Street project, if you have any.
Okay. Then, having no more comments or questions, we'll move on to item BG, Councilwoman Hammond. You wanted to speak to this?
Yes, I was just curious to get a little bit more information about, yeah, I guess really just the RFP, and what the process will look like for getting this consultant, and kind of what the timeline looks like.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. So this is a MAPS 4 item, and it's very similar to what we had in MAPS 3. As far as the services, it's just that we're going about it a little different way. Previously, it was contracted through the program consultant, and this time, we're going to, we're going to contract directly with them. So this program, or the PR consultant, will help us with a lot of things that you see, social media especially. They manage our Facebook and our Twitter accounts, and a lot of the, well, all of the pictures that you see on there come from the PR consultant. The video, the photos, the drone photos, those kinds of things are all produced by the PR consultant. And then they help us also with the ribbon cuttings. And as you just saw, the ribbon cutting with the convention center was a huge success, and that was largely because of our PR consultant, and also our ground breakings. So this is going through the standard process for RFPs, and it'll go through the bid sync process. Once we get the proposals back from, from the proposers, then we will have a committee of people review those proposals. And that includes myself. We're planning on having two members from the advisory board on that. Then there's a member from the Finance Department and the City Manager's Office. And then they'll recommend that to the MAPS 4 Advisory Board, and then that will come to City Council for final approval. And this has gone through the advisory board with MAPS 4.
Thank you. With the piece about the public meeting coordination, that's part of the services, does that include, like, meetings that might happen before a certain project is taking place, like with community and those sorts of things, or is that something else?
No, it's absolutely that. Like we did with the, with the park in MAPS 3, the PR consultant was very instrumental in putting those together and helping us coordinate all that.
Okay, thank you.
David, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Kind of building on Councilwoman Hammond's, something I've mentioned to just almost anyone who will listen to me on this is, I'm so excited about so many of the MAPS 4 projects, and I am particularly interested in our city's use of the word Renaissance for the last several years. And, you know, as someone who's literally teaching a class right now, comparing, using Boomtown to compare our Renaissance to the Italian Renaissance, something that's been longstanding out to me is the education, knowledge component of the Renaissance, right? The idea that, you know, before the Medici family gets in there and starts scooping up old text from the catacombs of the Catholic Church, the people, the majority of people living in Florence, they don't know who Plato is, Aristotle, you name it. That knowledge has just been kept from them. And then I think in my head, how I've heard so many people in recent years point out that if we go to the African American History Museum in Washington DC, the absence of Clara Looper, right? And we've spoken about how, you know, we can be mad at them for that in DC, or as we've been acknowledging, like, now wait a second, how effective have we been in our own backyard at acknowledging Miss Lu?
Councilman Cooper, it looks like you're frozen.
On town Britain, and in each one of those situations, in each one of those situations, there's a history, right? And I would very much like for us to see how we could use this moment to speak to the respective histories of those areas and bring that history to life for residents. Can you all hear me still?
Yes, we can now. You broke away.
Yes, I just, where did you lose me? Because I want to, what I'm saying is, it's very important to me.
I get that. Thank you.
Well, as I'm saying, where did you lose what I said?
Right before you got to the specific areas.
Like the commercial district areas?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, to my point, I'd like to see MAPS 4 be an opportunity to speak to the different histories of Britain District, Clara Looper Corridor, Capitol Hill, Stockyards, and then any other opportunity in MAPS 4 where we see projects that could help speak to our city's history, its people's contributions to that history, because I think that's going to inspire us as we move forward into the future. So that, is that something that this right here could address, is, I guess, kind of a question for me?
Well, yes, they would certainly be instrumental in that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I have an additional ask. Is it possible, I know we're probably going to look at one consultant or RFP for this in accepting, what would it look like for us to possibly work through a couple of different ones in relation to what the previous comments we heard? Because this particular part of MAPS 4 are really different projects compared to what we've done in the last few MAPS programs. So I think, again, to their point of us being able to tell the story on the front end and continuously educating each other in this process, because as we look at a lot of what has taken place in the previous MAPS programs, our community has been engaged, but if it, if it's not around us, we're not as engaged. Whereas with this MAPS program, it's in a lot of backyards, so it's going to have a lot of, a lot more engagement from our different communities across the city. So is there, is there a possibility, I really said all that to say, is there a possibility for us to maybe add two or three, or maybe a team of consultants instead of just having one overall consultant?
We could certainly look at that, but remember that this consultant will have a team. with them. They will have the graphic artists and, and we can certainly add specific meeting type people. We do anticipate that there'll be a lot of these meetings that I think you're, you're wanting, especially with the parks projects. We're going to be almost in every neighborhood out there. So we can certainly look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions on that item. We have a presentation on item BH.
Thank you, Mayor. On item BH, this is the update on the final plans and specs for the Wellness Center 1, Maps 3 Wellness Center 1, and Ryan Eschman is with us from GSB to give us an overview on the project.
Great, thanks so much. And I'll be happy to share my screen with this presentation if that's helpful. Good morning to you all. I'm excited to share this milestone on the additional improvements to Wellness Center number one. We have completed final plans and are ready to go bid this project. On the screen, you'll see a rendering showing the additional, the addition to the building on the west side. They're on the left edge of the building. We'll look at the plan here momentarily to show you what spaces have been added. As you may recall, we purchased only the land needed for the original Wellness Center, kind of a unique piece of property on North Rockwell. In order to expand the building and substantially expand the parking, we needed some additional land, which you see highlighted in blue. Again, allows us to accomplish just this project with minimal addition to the project site. The addition you see highlighted by the orange line on the left is the new construction to the right, all the existing building. And most of this will not be visible from Rockwell, because it's on the west side of the building, but certainly will be visible from within the site and the parking area. The addition is highlighted, the addition renovations are highlighted in the colored portions of this plan. In the center, you see a pink area, which is some additions and expansion of the existing locker room area. You see on the left, a blue area, which is an additional pickleball area, effectively a gym, which doubles the pickleball courts from three to six. And if you've been on, in this facility, you know how rabid the pickleball community is and how much they, how much they utilize that facility. So this will double that, that capacity. And green is a multipurpose space with an elevated stage platform, which allows for a myriad of uses. And it's equivalent in size to the large multipurpose room in the existing building, so it's a substantial space. And you'll also see in orange, some additional restrooms and dry locker areas to support all of that athletic activities, as well as some office and support space. You can see that highlighted here. The locker rooms I mentioned, particularly the women's locker room, because of the, the use of the pool, more shower space is needed. So there's two additional showers being added, more lockers, more benches, more private changing areas. We're taking an existing meeting room and cutting it in half, turning it into a smaller, more conference-sized room to accomplish this expansion. We've completed the final estimates and the project's still tracking in budget. We've included five alternates to give us flexibility on bid day and throughout the project, which could add some furniture, an opable partition, some additional storage space, some automatic door openers in and around the locker rooms, and some additional acoustical treatments. So we'll be going to bid the project with these elements as, as ad alternates. So just to look forward, bidding the project next month, beginning construction roughly May, and it will take approximately a year. The bid documents ask for the contractor to complete the parking lot as early as possible, as well as the locker room renovations. So at least those expanded facilities can be available to the patrons. Of course, it will be, the facility will be operational during construction, and the, the player, the team that run this facility, they're going to make accommodations for adjusting their operations with the fact that there'll be construction on the site. But we're excited about this facility and all of the patrons that utilize it and being able to offer additional space for all of, all that's going on out on North Rockwell. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, item BI, Councilwoman Hammond, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, I was also just curious, sort of like my previous item, to just get a kind of information about this, this project with parks. And I just know, I get a lot of questions and requests about programming in our parks, and I know a lot of that programming can tend to happen with, with private entities and contractors that kind of guide the, you know, the, what, what they're able to do in their own capacity to provide various types of programming. So I was just kind of curious what, what this will look like. And, and with, with whoever, I guess, responds to the RFP, kind of what they'll be tasked to do, especially as it relates to community engagement and kind of getting that piece of what communities are wanting from parks programming, as well as, I guess, if, if we're talking about certain parks, or is it like a certain size of park that they're going to be thinking about? Is it a certain area of the city, or is it just all of the parks? I'm just kind of curious about the project overall.
If I might, Mr. Manager, Doug Cupper, Parks and Recreation. All valid questions, and you hit the nail on the head. What, where do we fit in? Where, where does the City of Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department fit in with all of the, the providers? How do we partner with those providers? How do we add enrichment to our residents' uses of our parks and recreation spaces? But it comes down to public engagement. You know, there's no point in us creating classes in, in the Shillings Park area that we think might be good products for the, for the neighborhood. We want to talk to the neighborhood. We want the consultants to guide this conversation. We want, we want to make sure that we're relevant and we're planning for the future. Modern parks and recreation is, is a dynamic thing, constantly changing. Our demographics are constantly changing. We want to be able to be fluid and flexible so that we are meeting the needs of our users of the recreation facilities. And as, and as you pointed out, we have a lot of partners that are operating some of our assets now. We want to, we want to make sure that we have the best practices in mind when we create these documents and these agreements for other people to operate city real estate and offering recreation programs. We also want to make sure that we are cognizant of sustainability of these facilities going forward and making sure that we are a solid partner and help the sustainability of our partners that sign up to operate facilities. And not just, not just our partners, but we ourselves being sustainable in our thinking and, and processes. We have four youth centers that are going to be coming on in, in the Maps 4 program. We want to get ahead of that and really dial in on what those youth centers might look like, what they, what kind of programs we might be offering that aren't your traditional recreation center programs, but beyond that, food pantries, habidasheries. I've, I've spoken of these, these type of programs before. We want to make sure that the kids' fundamental life needs are being met, food, clothing, social dynamics, getting them assistance and things along those lines. We want to be cognizant of what we should be looking at. And when we, when we sit down with the Maps 4 advisory committees and the subcommittees and start talking about the improvements or those assets that will be added through Maps 4, we, you know, we, we will have five senior citizen, senior health and wellness facilities operating in our city. We, again, we want to make sure we understand how to make those sustainable, how to help partner with those, those companies that come along that we sign up for the operations of these facilities, make sure that they know what the best practices are and have those in mind going forward as well. So the dynamics of parks and recreation is, is always changing, you know, in days of old, you know, well, I hate to say how old I am, but when we went to the community centers, we, we shot, shot marbles, not pool. We shot marbles. That was, that was a big thing. You don't do that anymore. E-games is the next big thing. Can we stay, can we stay relevant with what's coming down the pike? And that's what, what we want to accomplish with this RFP. And again, public engagement, talking to each individual neighborhoods that surround our facilities and then plan for the future. And we, we hope to be able to refresh this in 10 years, make sure that we got the next 10 years planned out and, and insight. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, that's very comprehensive. I appreciate it. Yeah, just as this keeps rolling out, I'd be happy to, especially any parks in Ward 6, connect you, connect the consultant and whatever team is working on this to, to any neighborhoods that, especially ones that don't have a formal neighborhood association. Just any opportunity to help share about those, those opportunities to engage. I'm happy to do that. So thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's our intent, is they have all the council folks involved in participation in the, the neighborhood meetings as much as you all want to be involved. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that brings us to item BL, Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to speak to this?
Yes, I, I just wanted to make sure we corrected this. I know we, we mentioned it yesterday, but because this happened on Southeast 74th and Southeast 89th on Douglas Boulevard, I had to give this to Ward 4. It didn't actually occur Ward 7. Either way, it is a judgment for, for the person, the resident, but I do want to make mention that unfortunately, I'm not that far in that area.
We will get that corrected. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, well, that concludes all the items that anyone wanted to discuss under the consent docket. We could now take a motion for adoption if council so wished to do so. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Let's, Councilwoman Macatee able to vote? Okay. Councilwoman Hammond, have you had a chance to vote?
It is freezing up on me, so I'll just vote aye.
Okay. Passed unanimously. That brings us to item 8, the concurrence docket. We have items A through N. We could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9, items requiring separate votes. Item 9A was previously deferred. So we're at item 9B. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval. Repealing ordinance number 26515, closing the rights of way and easements for the Maps 3 Lower Downtown Park bounded by West I-40 and Southwest 15th Street between Robinson and Walker, et cetera. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, so this is an ordinance to repeal what we had previously approved. My understanding is there is just some, some description errors that were just a little bit off. So C is then to approve the, the correct version. So I will move for approval when it comes up.
All right, so this is for 9B, which is basically repealing an ordinance. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then the councilwoman indicated that 9C is related, and this is a ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, closing, vacating, discontinuing, and foreclosing the right to reopen certain public streets, alleyways, and rights of ways in accordance with the Court of Shore Urban Renewal Plan as adopted by the City of Oklahoma City, et cetera. Councilwoman, do you wish to say anything else?
No, I just moved for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9D, we have one and, items one and two under D. This is, the first one is an amendment to Section 2, revising and clarifying language reserving easement rights to the city. And then there is D2. This is an ordinance on final hearing to close a portion of the platted six-foot sewer easement crossing lots eight and nine of Block 2 in the Von Dale Second Edition, 1155 East Madison Street. This was deferred from February 16th. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I will go ahead and ask for approval for this item.
Okay, so I'm going to take that as a motion for the amendment found at D1. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So let's do that electronically now. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And now we're on item 9D2. Councilwoman, do you wish to make a motion on the adoption of the ordinance?
I will move to adopt the ordinance.
Okay. This is, of course, we've got a motion in a second on the ordinance as amended. And cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, 9E is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval to close a portion of the utility easement at 235 Southeast 59th Street. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, this is just closing a portion of the utility easement at 235 Southeast 59th as staff approval, as planning commission. So unless there's any questions, I'll move for approval.
All right, got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Soon as you can. Passed unanimously. 9F is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval to close a portion of utility easement at 4901 South Bryant Avenue. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. This is also a closing a portion of the utility easement over at the Metro Tech, and I would move for approval unless anyone has any questions.
I've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9G is an ordinance, this is to be introduced and adopted potentially with the emergency. This is authorizing and directing adjustment of water usage tiers for residential and non-residential water customers for the March 2021 billing. Mr. City Manager, I believe we have a presentation on this.
Yes, Chris Browning, our utilities director, is on to make a presentation on this. This item relates to the water usage during the winter storm that we had just recently, the severe winter storm, and allowing for adjustments in the tiers on the rates to help give residents a break if they were affected by water breaks, or especially by the situation of dripping their faucets. I'll let Chris walk us through that and how that, how the rate system normally works and then how we'll make adjustments on that.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning. The ordinance being introduced generally authorizes an adjustment to water usage tiers for residential and non-residential our customers for the March 2021 billing cycle. We currently have four tiers. The first tier is for the low-volume users. Second tier is indoor water users. Third tier is generally targets the outdoor water usage in the summertime, where people use their sprinklers and fill their pools and wash their cars, so on and so forth. And then the fourth tier would be the very high-volume users. So what, what we're, what we're trying to do with this ordinance is to authorize us to adjust the usage for that period of time where people drip their faucets, the two-week period, well, actually, the one-week period, where they drip their faucets and may have used in a, a higher used in a higher volume of water than they normally would use, down to tier two, which is an indoor water use tier, which makes, makes perfect sense. It's, it's established for the indoor water usage. They generally did it to avoid damage to plumbing, which could have caused a much higher demand on the water system. And as you all know, we had an extremely high demand on the water system. So, so if we'd had a lot of customers with broken pipes, if they hadn't had dripped their pipes and we had a lot of damaged plumbing, the water demand would have gone up even higher. So our customers historically have lower water usage during the winter periods and always stay within their first two tiers. With this higher water demand, we anticipate that some customers will receive bills with usage charged at the higher tiers during the March billing. We've already sent out most of the March bills. So what we would like to do with the approval of this ordinance as an emergency is go ahead and start adjusting the bills in April to give people a credit for that usage back in February so that any usage above tier two will be billed at the tier two rate. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Guess the only question I have, this is Mark Stonecypher. Does this need to be passed with the two motions or can it be a motion to approve the ordinance with an emergency?
I believe.
Yeah, we'll need two motions. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a.
Appropriate time.
Go ahead. I just wanted to, can you sort of, because this is a lot of just like words, can you give sort of maybe a little example of like, of what maybe someone's water bill might look like this month and then what they would expect to see on that April if this passes?
Sure. So the, the average usage in the wintertime for residents in Oklahoma City is about 7,000 to 8,000 gallons. That's the average for all customers across the board in Oklahoma City. And so I did a little calculation during the really, really cold periods of time. And if, and if you ran your faucet with a very, very small stream about the size of a pencil lead to keep those pipes on the exterior walls from freezing or to keep your service line from freezing, that's about, that's less than 100 gallons a day. Now, depending on the number of sinks in the house would, would determine how much water they actually use, but, but for a five-day period, if you had two sinks, that's about 1,000 gallons. If you ran four sinks, it's about 2,000. And the, the difference in price between tier two and tier three is about a dollar 30 cents a thousand. In addition, we don't want to include that usage in establishing the winters, the winter average for sewers. So we will be adjusting that accordingly. So instead of using the normal December, January, February calculations for winter average, we're going to include March to dampen that effect so that the sewer bills will be decreased as well throughout the rest of the year.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
So at the appropriate time, I'd move for approval of the ordinance.
Okay. Well, let's do it then. All right. Got a motion in a second for adoption of the ordinance. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and then if council so wishes, we need an emergency.
Move it. Yeah, I'd move it. I have it adopted.
Okay. Let's do that electronically now. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item. Right. Somebody. Okay. Okay. Item nine H. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance that was presented at our last meeting pertaining to false alarm fees. This is in our cycle. This is the second of three meetings on this. Today is merely the public hearing. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing? They have not. So we will close the public hearing and move on to item nine I. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on March 30th and final hearing on April 13th, potentially relating to solid waste, amending chapter 49 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code by amending article two municipal collection service, division one generally, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. City Manager, I believe will have a presentation on this.
It's Chris Browning, our utilities director, give us a quick update on this. This is another step in that process as we're merging the Environmental Assistance Trust with the Water Utility Trust. So Chris, I'll let you explain the ordinance.
Thanks, Craig. This is an administrative component of the merger with OCD and Offwitt. There are a number of places in chapter 49 of the ordinance that specifically addresses solid waste management where the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust is named. And what we're proposing to do with this change is to restate that as Oklahoma City or its authorized public trust. So that just cleans up the document administratively. And I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Okay. Quick forward enough. If there are no questions, we could take a motion to introduce the ordinance for consideration. We've got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be set for public hearing on March 30th, final hearing potentially on April 13th. Okay. Nine J one is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
Mayor.
Okay, then, oh. Did someone speak up there?
Yes, I have a question. I know we did strike one of these buildings for our unsecured. So I'm curious for the dilapidated, what the difference would be for that? Item E. We, we struck it on item K. If I'm not mistaken. Yes, item K, item number K is, is similar to item J E, J one E.
Right. Chad Davidson, code enforcement superintendent. I think we have a hole in the roof of this property here at 200 Northeast 16th. We really don't feel the need to secure that hole in the roof, but we still do believe the property to be in bad enough shape that it meets our dilapidated criteria.
Okay. Were they in contact with us?
Uh, I do not believe, I don't see any notes that we had any contact with the property owner, no.
Okay. Let me, let me pause on this one just a couple of weeks only because of what we're looking at here. If you don't mind. So I would, I'm going to defer that item E. J one E.
J one E. Okay, there's a motion to defer. Let's do that electronically now. All right. Got a motion in a second to defer item J one E. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we're back on nine J one. We were just being told by the clerk's office that nobody has signed up to speak under this public hearing. If there are no other issues, we might proceed to nine J two, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion in a second. Oh, we can't have a motion in a second about the same person. So we got something wrong there.
I don't know what happened.
There we go. All right. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Now we're at nine K one. This is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures here listed, other than those that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll close the public hearing then and proceed to nine K two. This is the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. Would the council wish to make a move? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
Mayor?
Yes.
On, on this item, could our code enforcement team keep me updated as it relates to specifically K one E? That's an, a structure many residents have brought to my attention for the past two years since I've taken office. So any, I'd appreciate any updates as we learn more about where we are with this structure going forward, please.
Okay. And that one was struck, right, at the beginning? Yeah, but obviously it's still, still on their radar. So thank you, Councilman. Okay, so we're in the middle of a vote on nine K two. Passes unanimously. All right. Nine L one is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, other than those that were struck, which is quite a few. Has anyone signed up to speak, Amy?
No.
We have no one who has signed up to speak in this public hearing. So we can turn now to the resolution found at nine L two, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're at nine M. Okay, so this is deferred from our last meeting. To remind you, this is the resolution approving the Oklahoma City MAPS investment and operating trust indenture and accepting beneficial interest for the City of Oklahoma City in said trust and trust indenture, and also approving the appointment of seven initial trustees of this trust. So this, to remind you, of course, we had a presentation, a full presentation on this at our last meeting. This is the trust that would oversee the investment of the proceeds from MAPS four that were allocated by this council in August of 2019 towards certain funds that will then spin off proceeds that will be used for the operations and maintenance of some of the MAPS four projects. And with the council's urging, we deferred this two weeks to add two more members. And so it is now a seven-member board. And I, I went to work on that and now have those seven appointees for your consideration today, as well, obviously, as the trust indenture. We don't really need any other presentation, but if, if there's any comments or questions, now's the time to jump in. Otherwise, we can take a motion to approve the resolution.
Hit it again, I don't want.
All right, no worries. Sure, it's not your fault. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Well, that's exciting. That's a, that's a big step for MAPS four. So thank you to everybody for your hard work on that, especially Wiley, who had to write a 40-page trust indenture. I know that's quite a skill. We appreciate that very much. All right. Nine N one is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Harland Carr while he continues to require rehab to recover from an on-the-job injury. I don't believe we need executive session. We could take a motion to adopt the resolution. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Cooper? Have you been able to vote?
Um, my screen says waiting.
Okay, well, how would you like to vote?
I would like to vote yes, please.
All right. We can handle that. Passes unanimously. Item nine O one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admission of liability in the case of Dedrick v. City of OKC. Staff is not requesting an executive session. What does the council wish to do with the resolution?
Motion inappropriate.
Okay. Looks like we've got that underway. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine P one is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Lot v. City of OKC. Staff is also not requesting an executive session on this item.
Is it still possible for us to go into executive session for this item?
It is. We already have a Zoom ready for that anyways because of item S. So if that is the desire to discuss this item, let's make a motion to that effect then. Is that, and I take it from your question, that is what you wish to do, Councilwoman Nice?
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't we pull back on this motion here and and load up a motion to go into executive session on item P one? All right, we have a motion in a second for executive session. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of our other business, along with what would be an anticipated executive session on item S. That brings us to item Q one. This is a resolution authorizing Richard Mann and Brett Logan, assistant municipal counselors to represent and defend city employee Wade Gorley in the case of Lakezey Jr. v. City of OKC. Staff has not requested an executive session. What does the council wish to do?
I'd like some more information on this one, too.
Okay. Then I guess that'd be a motion to enter executive session on that item.
Correct.
Okay, we got that loaded up. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then we're at item R one, joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing the firm of Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent municipal employees Bill Weaver, Vance Allen, and Doug Kimberlin in United States District Court for the Western District of Oklahoma in the case styled Lakezey v. City of OKC, et cetera. Staff has not requested. Go ahead.
I would like first to go into executive session about this item, please.
Okay. We'll load up that motion as well. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then finally, we have item S, which is to enter in the executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for the fiscal year 2021, 22 with the FOP, IAF, and ASME. We just need a motion to go into executive session. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. So at the end of our other business, we'll go into executive. So at the end of our other business, we'll go into executive session for, I believe, four total items and also be advised that three of those items have resolutions associated with them. So there could be votes cast after executive session. All right, that concludes item nine. Brings us to item 10. Items from council. We have an item on the agenda today, an ordinance to be introduced and referred to the Planning Commission. So this is not being put in front of the council for its consideration yet. It is being referred to the Planning Commission for its comment. This is amending chapter 59, zoning and planning code, Article 2, definition, section 59, 2150.2, relating to the general definitions of dwelling to include manufactured homes, modular homes, mobile homes, and house trailers. I don't know who wishes to maybe explain this, but council members McAtee and Stone are the co-authors.
I, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I can talk a little bit through this and then Councilman McAtee, if you want to add anything. So we've come across a couple of instances where things that aren't necessarily allowed to be done close to a dwelling were taking place. And when we asked code enforcement to go look at it, they said, well, that isn't a stick-built house. It's a trailer house and therefore it's not considered a dwelling, which I guess when I think of it myself, people live there. They dwell there. It's a semi-permanent structure and therefore I thought it should be added as a dwelling. I've run across this in my ward. I know Councilman McAtee has run across it in his ward as well. And that's the reason we're requesting this change to the definition. Councilman McAtee, did you have anything to add on that?
You're muted.
No, very well explained.
Thanks. Did anyone else from council have any questions on it?
Matt, can you just, I guess, give me an example or, because what I'm seeing is that modular homes is one of the kind of, well, that we're moving a bunch of stuff up to including rather than not including. But it's, what I'm sort of hearing is that right now, if there's like a mobile home or, you know, I'm sort of thinking like tiny house, like little, maybe more like, you know, fancy looking. Anyway, sorry, I'm thinking of a meme online. Is it, am I hearing that correctly? That right now code enforcement can't really address tall grass and weeds around those or kind of those sorts of things because they're included in the not including portion?
It really had more to do with activities of the neighbors. So for instance, and this is out in rural area, you have to keep, if you do have a rooster, you have to keep it a certain distance away from any other dwellings next door. So this person had a trailer house on this property, been there for a long, long time. Neighbor gets a rooster, puts it next to the property line, and we can't enforce that distance to keep the rooster away from the dwelling because it's a trailer house versus a stick-built house. So that was, that was the case in my instance. And I just felt like it was the fair thing to do for the people that had been there for a long time that lived there, that the neighbor should, should have to respect that. So that was the reason for that change.
Okay, okay, that's.
If there's no more questions, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move it.
Okay, go ahead. So this is, again, I want to reiterate the procedural posture we're in. This is just a motion to introduce the ordinance and refer it to the Planning Commission. If it were ever to be actually adopted by the council, it would come back to us and go through that whole three-meeting process we've grown accustomed to. We have a motion in a second for introduction. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll go around the virtual horseshoe just for variety's sake. How about we start at Ward 8 and go backwards?
I have nothing today, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, Ward 7.
Yes, quite a few different things. Is Kathy O'Connor with us today? I'll wait for her. In the meantime, I'd like to, to say thank you to all of those who were a part of our convention center ground ribbon cutting. And it was truly a great success that we had with being able to really enjoy ourselves even in the midst of, of the pandemic that we are experiencing, limited people. But we were still able to accommodate the folks that were there. And I spoke about some of the history of that particular area in the ribbon cutting. But I do want us to never forget, you know, these, the areas of where our space is and, and where we come from. And obviously with the land run and then the settling of this particular area, South Town, you had your enclave of black communities that were also established in these areas. And I reference Sandtown because that's where my paternal, my paternal family found home for many, many years. So these are the places where our, our land is sitting. So I think we should always continue to remember our story of how Oklahoma City came to be and even the places where culturally our community has been. And unfortunately, in this particular area, we're pushed out due to industrial industries coming into this particular area to, to settle. So those are things we also want to continue to remember as we celebrate and, and introduce more culture to this particular community of our convention center and also enjoying the, just the, the area in between that we did open up as far as the dedication of the street for former Mayor Mick Cornet. There were a couple of other things. I just can't remember all of them that I wanted to say. I know we do have a couple of vaccination pods that will be coming in the area of northeast Oklahoma City as well as the Spencer Green Pastures area towards the end of the month. So we are extremely excited and hopeful about those things. And to the mayor, welcome to the vaxxed club. I know you got your first vaccination. And I know myself, I, I got my second one last week, the day before our ribbon cutting. And it's, it, it feels good to know you can have that second one. For those who may have the two doses, I know some of us are getting just one, but being able to, to just live on a different level in, in a lot of aspects, but still carefully, because we still have to continue to wash our hands, keep our social distance, and wear our masks and protect ourselves and protect our loved ones. So I want to continue to do that. And we're continuing to celebrate Women's History Month. So let's, let's look at, at the women that have been very instrumental in the spaces that we hold, continue to uplift in, again, I continue to work through the, the many more challenges that we have to face when it comes to our city and advancing our city forward. So I do see Kathy O'Connor is here. So since our, our normal scheduled meetings were, were not, they were removed from the calendar, I, I guess I just ask some of my questions now since we have the time to do that pertaining to Ward 7. So if you don't mind, I have a letter here that came from a lot of our residents. So I would like for you, one of our residents in particular, and I know we're trying to address that, talk about this small micro, micro enterprise business program, where we are, what we're looking at, and why we have so many gaps as far as our community members and business owners in this area having a difficulty in working through this process.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Our meetings weren't completely canceled. I just had to cancel the one for next week because I've been called a jury duty. So I apologize for that.
We missed two. We've missed two.
Okay. On the micro enterprise program, we have had a few businesses that did not have adequate documentation, including tax records, payroll records that were sufficient to meet the standards for the program. We have been trying to work with those businesses. We've referred them to the Community Action Agency Small Business Program so that Community Action can work with them to develop the documentation. But as a, just as a reminder, the micro enterprise program that was managed by the Urban Renewal Authority is funded with CDBG funding. So we had to follow the HUD guidelines as far as documentation and requirements. So we did try to work with those businesses. We've spent many, many times in meetings with them, working through these difficulties. So we're hoping that they can work with Community Action Agency and get the documentation that they need to be eligible for any future programs we might have. And even on the city's programs that were funded with the CARES Act, people did have to have tax returns, banking records, evidence of expenses or lost revenues in order to meet the qualifications for that program as well. So yes, some businesses did fall through the cracks, but we are trying to get them the technical assistance and resources they need to be able to qualify for any future programs.
And I think that's where my difficulty in this is because reaching out to those community members, I'm understanding that all of them are receiving different information and nobody's receiving the same. While I understand we have different situations for different businesses, we're still having this problem where the, the communication is not succinct for our relative, our neighbors to understand what the full requirements are for them to be able to participate and/or move forward with the technical assistance. So I would like to, and I've said it before, continue to look at how we communicate with the, the neighbors and, and look at a date for us to have a community meeting with those who may want to qualify and look at the requirements so we can give them just one line of this is what you need, this is how we move forward, and these are the things you need to bring with you for this conversation. Another thing, I know we, we had a mini-market idea. So I would like to know the result of that.
I've been in discussions with the Chamber of Commerce. Some of my staff and the chamber staff have met with Apollo Woods, with OKC Black Eats. We were trying to develop some options and some ideas to present to you. So that's all still a work in progress. And we want to, we want to make sure that we have a, a complete proposal when we bring it back to you.
Where the young lady with the mini-market idea?
Oh, the mini-market. Yes, I met with her. I'm sorry, I was thinking about our restaurant development idea that we had a Zoom meeting about a couple of weeks ago. I apologize. Yes, we had a meeting with Antoinette Webster and we are helping her. You know, she has a little bit more work to do. She's applied for various programs and grants. But we did have a meeting with her last week and she's going to be looking into some of the information we provided to her and getting back to us.
Well, speaking with her, I know she has some difficulty in, in the conversations that she had. So being able to navigate through that seemed as if she was feeling as if she was being deterred to think of another idea. And that's not what we talked about as far as wanting to assist her in this effort. So I would like for us to continue to work through this effort of talking with her for this particular venture, for a community market idea on, on the, the, the east end of Fourth Street for our community members who, obviously, we need some, some food access in that particular area. And I, I know you understand the issue of where we are and the need for our communities in relation to that. Where are we also with this, looking at the northeast residential construction that you had in place that you also talked about? I see some, some new items on here for that.
We have quite a few single-family houses under construction in the JFK area. Let me get to that part of my report. We have 19 market-rate, single-family houses under construction in some various stage of construction. Either they've just recently entered into a redevelopment agreement or they're, they have construction underway. We also have 21 single-family houses and seven duplexes that are affordable, that are under redevelopment agreements and ready to get started. We do have a few other single-family houses and one duplex and one rehab that are also under construction. We've been working, the, the other most recent update is with Ground Route Development. Valerie McMurray and Julie Coffey are going to apply for a spud to build three single-family for-sale homes on a corner lot at 10th and Lottie. And so we're working with them to develop a community engagement plan for their zoning request.
And as we're looking at the Innovation District, I see some new updates there as well.
Let's see. Most recent thing on the Innovation District, we, the State Chamber has accepted our offer for their building and we will be, we're working through the, the details of that, that purchase right now and how we'll make that transition with them. They will not be moving from that building for some time, at least until they can locate a new, find a new location for their operation. Let's see. On the Fourth Street area design and planning that we had talked about with you several times, we did receive an updated proposal from Black Space Oklahoma and we're in the process of reviewing that. And I think that's probably the biggest things that are different. On the two houses that we acquired on Lindsay, we're waiting to, we've gotten the asbestos survey back. They have significant, one has significant asbestos, the other one has very little. So we're getting abatement estimates on that. And then we are trying to get back with Brahms and discuss their properties that they own in the area as well.
Okay. And then there was another question that I had. Oh, did we get the bumper blocks up in the area of the parking lot construction?
I don't know the answer to that. I can check and find out. We were having problems locating any. They're apparently sold out throughout the metro area. So we were trying to locate some. And that's for the grocery market at, for Restory OKC. Urban Renewal contributed the parking lot to that project.
And as far as the 24th and MLK Anglin social media posts, is that up?
I have some draft language I'd like to send to you that I got yesterday.
Okay, I'll be awaiting that and looking forward to the next conversation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ward 6.
Yes, thank you. All I have is, I just wanted to mention that on Friday, I had the opportunity to go down to St. Luke's Asbury on the south side where Empower OKC is utilizing their building to what they're calling the Hope, one of their Hope Centers, doing kind of after-school activities and other things with youth. But they are currently, right now, today and tomorrow, hosting a book fair. So I was able to set up a little, help set up a little book fair that reminded me of Scholastic book fairs when I was a kid. But they are providing books for, completely free to children in the area. So just for anyone who might be watching or hear of this today, March 16th, and tomorrow, March 17th, they're hosting that from 10:00 to 4:00. They are asking that people sign up online, but if you can't, you can always just show up and they'll try to slot you in when, when it's safe. They're just trying to make sure that not too many people are in the space all at once. This is a little small. But I just wanted to highlight the really good work that Empower is doing in the area and, and really just responding to the needs. I know, my understanding is this came out of a conversation with Representative Jose Cruz, who talked about his own experience as a kid and with trying to access book fairs and things and just kind of the barriers that happen for kids who, whose parents maybe can't afford them or maybe are unbanked and so don't, you know, can't write a check. And it just kind of gets real, real messy. And it just kind of gets real, real muddy and difficult for, for those kids. So it was just really neat to see the community come together around this issue. And my understanding as of yesterday, they had, they had their program kids come through first, is my understanding yesterday, and they were already starting to run out of certain sections of books. So it was very popular and I'm sure they're gonna be cleaned out by tomorrow. But, but lots of really great books and just the community coming together and donating all of those. I think they had over a thousand books donated. So just wanted to highlight their good work and say thanks to, to them for what they're doing for the community.
Okay, thank you. Word five.
No, thanks, Mayor.
All right, word four.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, word three. Do you have anything, Councilman McAtee? You are muted.
Nothing today, sir.
All right, we are getting a little sad, Councilman McAtee. We know you've got one meeting left and we will definitely be excited to honor you next time. Word two.
I, please stop me if, if the volume cuts out again. So first things first, and I rarely get to talk about this history, but you know, with St. Patrick's Day coming, I've been thinking quite a bit about my grandfather on my mother's side. I was born in nineteen eighty-two and he passed away before I was born, so I never got to meet him. But my grandpa Abner was a Pentecostal preacher and it's through him and my grandmother Stella that I have the freckles that I do. So if you've ever wondered, I, I often forget about them, but people will often point out when they meet me, the appearance of freckles on my skin. And that is through my grandpa and my grandmother, who had last names like Hamus and these sorts of things, and Simpson. So I just wanted to kind of take that time to wish everyone happy St. Patrick's Day. But I would encourage everyone to dig into the history of Ireland and the Irish. And I think there's some really fascinating stories there, particularly as it relates to people like Saint Bridget of Kildare. This is Women's History Month after all. And as someone who's spent about six hours watching an A and E documentary on the history of Christianity, I was really intrigued by the role she played in the establishing of monasteries. I, as someone who teaches, I'm also always interested in the role that the monks played in the perseverance, preserving, excuse me, of classical text and of by hand rewriting the Bible so that it would be with us all these years later. And of course, I'm talking like before one thousand A.D., before there is the printing press that we'll know comes along in the era of Martin Luther. So yeah, I really, really love digging into that history, not always a pleasant history, by the way. So, and I guess that was also on my mind last week because, you know, though I didn't know my grandfather, like I said, he was a Pentecost and apparently he used to get in some trouble that no one, I didn't know until I was an adult. But my mom tells me that, you know, for someone who was born pretty, pretty close to the turn of the last century, at a time when automobiles weren't even a thing, by the time he's an adult and he's preaching, I'm to understand that leadership in the Pentecostal Church was very upset with him. And the reason why he, they were upset with him is because my grandpa Abner apparently had the tendency to join black pastors in their churches, in black churches, and preach alongside them. And this was a time of segregation of Jim Crow, where that's literally, you know, just literally illegal in some ways. And they told my grandpa Abner to absolutely not preach in those spaces, that it was actually against biblical teachings for a white pastor to do what my grandpa Abner was doing. And apparently, my grandpa Abner was very stubborn. And his response, and these were some pretty tense ecclesiastical debates they were having. And my grandpa Abner would respond anytime they would tell him to stop, that he would, and this is how my mom tells it, the quote, "He would go anywhere where people needed to hear the teachings of Jesus." And so I just, I, I, I am so sad I never met him and that I never got to sit down and hear his interpretations of his sacred text and why in an era when, you know, water hoses turned on people, dogs turned on people, people preaching that black folk are literally subhuman, how it was my grandfather knew better, just knew better, just knew better. So I, I tell that story also to say to you that there have always been people across the decades, across the centuries, who have understood humanity and human rights. That's why I'm always a bit suspicious when someone tells me, "Oh, but back then, people thought differently and let's cut them some slack." I don't know, you know, my grandpa Abner seemed to understand. And I, I have to tell you, I am very, very honored to know that his story flows on in my very being and in my sister's being and my soon to be niece or nephew that she's gonna have. So I just wanted to say that, and that's especially on my mind, not just because of St. Patrick's Day, but because, you know, Councilwoman Hammond and I had the honor this last weekend to drive down to Norman, Oklahoma and to meet and greet the young women who are now Oklahoma six A state champions in basketball. And we were honored to greet them upon their arrival home to Norman High School. And unfortunately, you know, part of that story, part of their excellence, part of their success, unfortunately, exists alongside a sports announcer who called them, forgive the language, but effing N-words. And they use that language because those brave young athletes wanted to show their solidarity with those who are speaking out and trying to undo the legal legacy of, of white supremacy, of the history my grandfather lived through and in his own ways advocated through. And as someone who has heard that word used to describe me, as someone who has heard words like worthless used to describe me, based on nothing other than the color of my skin, I was really disgusted to hear someone, an adult, use such language to describe those young women, particularly again during Women's History Month. But whether it was Saint Bridget of Kildare or Clara Looper or Madame CJ Walker, we've, or Harriet Tubman, you name them. There have always been women who've stood up and done the right thing. And I am very proud of those young women who are now our state's six A state champions. There is never an excuse to call someone the N-word. I also, last week, it was a rough week, y'all. I saw a video that Lee Sandwiches shared after a gentleman came into their restaurant unmasked and started screaming at the employees, the workers, and literally called them traitors to our country. Now look, that struck a nerve because anyone who knows the history of our Asian district knows that the, the significant contributions our Vietnamese community has made to our small business community, to neighborhoods, to education, and to know that we have so many Vietnamese residents because they literally got in a boat to escape a war torn country, the horrors of war. Many did not survive and those who did, their stories remain with them. And it's been the honor of my life to sit down with some of our young and older leaders in the Asian district and in the Asian community, even outside of that district, to hear them describe harrowing stories of survival, endurance, perseverance, resilience, and to become part of our American story, of our Oklahoma City community, our one OKC, as the mayor describes it. So to hear someone describe the good people of our Asian district as traitors to our country is just beyond disappointing and insulting and speaks to someone who does not know the history of our city and all the different communities which make up this wonderful place. So I went to the Asian district, went to Lee's, as I am used to doing, grabbed me an iced coffee, met with Jenny Nguyen, who is with her father, long been responsible stewards of Lee Sandwiches, and grabbed some egg rolls and I made my way to go teach at UCO. So it was really hard last week to, you know, hear the language that I have just described to you hurled at the Asian district and workers at Lee's and to hear the language I just described to you hurled at young women in our high schools. My students' well-being.
Councilman? Are you there? Councilman? We lost, we lost just the last thirty seconds.
Okay, I was just gonna say, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as you all know, students are always going to be my priority. Their well-being and safety is always gonna be my priority and that's why I went to Norman. And that's why I'm speaking to this issue right now on city council. And then I just wanted to also say, congratulations to our historic Thirty-Ninth Street district for the improvements you heard coming their way. I'm quite excited to see what's next for that historic area. And then I would remind anybody who has not had a chance to do so yet to reach out via email to the consultant our city has hired, to speak to the different community policing conversations we're having about what public safety could look like in the twenty-first century. And that email is voicesofokc@twentyonecpolutions.com. Feel free to add your voice to that conversation regardless of your perspective. It's just very important that all of our communities make sure their voices are heard in this conversation. And, you know, just to conclude, while I'm really devastated about what happened at Lee's last week, I would put this in a broader context where it's just a headline from The Guardian.
Councilman Cooper, you're frozen again.
Just experienced everything ranging from verbal abuse.
Councilman Cooper, you were frozen for about thirty seconds.
Okay, I was just saying that there's a headline in The Guardian that says, "Asian Americans Reported Thirty-eight Hundred Hate-Related Incidents During the Pandemic." And I just have to say that our words matter. I think that when we describe the coronavirus as, you know, the words that we've heard people describe it, that associate it specifically not with the Chinese government, but with Chinese people, we should not be surprised when we get the sort of attacks on our Asian American family that we are hearing. I know we can do better than that. And as someone who has served in our middle school classrooms, has everyone from Asian Americans to Hispanic Latinx, to black, to people who are descendants, as my grandfather was, from Ireland to Poland, you name it, we have to do better. We have to do better. It is, it's just important that we do better. So that's all I have this morning. I have to say, Mayor, congratulations on your vaccination.
Thank you. And are you, you must be two shots down by now, right?
I am. I, as I posted on social media, took my shot when it was offered to us as a transit trust. I was initially hesitant about that, but you know, we barely had a transit quorum because two of our leaders on COPPA, you know, are over that sixty-five and they've been at such a risk. And I just wanted to make sure that I took that shot and I wanted to make sure also that I could demonstrate to our employees who operate within the transit system that I wouldn't ask them to do anything I wouldn't do myself. So thank you for, for that, Mayor.
Sure. All right, I don't know that Councilman Griner is with us, is he? Probably not. I haven't seen him. Okay, well, that concludes items from council then and brings us to item eleven, city manager reports.
Mayor, I don't have any city manager reports today other than the claims and payroll.
All right, all right, which you can look at online with this agenda at OKC.go. That brings us to citizens to be heard, item twelve. Have we had anyone sign up? We have not had anyone sign up. So we will proceed now to executive session where we will talk about items P1, Q1, R1, and S. And when we return, there is the potential for votes on items P1, Q1, and R1. With that, I will see the rest of the council in the executive session Zoom and you should have received an email with that link. We will return.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you all. So we have returned from executive session and now we're back in our normal city council meeting. And we've got some items to vote on. First item is item P1, resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability. Lot versus Oklahoma City. And.
I'd move the item when appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And would someone consider seconding it? Okay, now we will, we will vote now. Please vote. Amy, this is David Greenwell.
Yes.
I'm not able to vote through Prime Gov, so I'm just going to give you a voice vote for me, okay?
Okay.
Amy, this is Mark Stonecifer. I'm gonna vote yes verbally.
Okay.
And Amy, as soon as you see the results, just let us know and then, well, or I'll give you my vote now.
Okay.
My vote is yes.
Okay. Give us just a second. Okay.
Okay, I can see the results and so it's approved unanimously. Okay, the next item is item Q1, resolution authorizing Richard Mann and Brett Logan, Assistant Municipal Counselors, to represent and defend city. City employee as listed and I'll accept any motions.
Yeah, and as appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we will now vote on item Q1.
Is anyone voice voting?
David Greenwell, yes.
Stonecifer, yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. It's approved unanimously. So the final item to vote on is item number R1. Joint resolution authorizing the firm of Collins, Zorn and Wagner to represent municipal employees in the stated lawsuit.
I'll move the item or second it.
Thank you. Okay, please vote. Amy, I will vote yes, please.
Okay.
Likewise, Amy, thank you.
Okay.
It's approved unanimously. All of the business set forth before the city council today, as such, we are now adjourned. Thank you.